Call the meeting to order. This is the City Council University Heights Special Meeting, February 21st, 2023. The meeting is being conducted electronically and all five council are present. And do we have members of the public yet?
No. Oh, no, Alejandro is just coming in.
Okay, well, I'm thinking that comments from the public can be during the session if anyone would like to speak. What I want to do is it's, I want everyone to meet each other and it's kind of difficult on Zoom because no one knows when to speak. So I'll just call council's first name and then they can identify themselves. Steph?
Hi.
You can say Stephanie gone, city council.
Okay, Stephanie gone, city council member.
Thank you. Lisa?
Lisa Moore, council member.
Tim?
Tim Schroeder, council member.
Thank you, Tim. Bobby?
Bobby Scott, council member.
And Doug?
Doug Swales, city council member.
Okay, and then we'll introduce staff and Mike. Mike Haverkamp was speaking. He usually just goes off screen during this and I think you all met him. And then we have Steve.
I'm Steve Ballard, city attorney.
And Troy?
Troy Kelsey, police chief.
Okay, very good. And initially, you know, I spoke with the school board director, Lisa Williams and Stephanie gone, she spoke with both Stephanie and I. And she wanted to set up a meeting. And so Lisa, I'll have you introduce your people that are attending.
Mayor Fromm, thank you, everyone for making time to meet with us today. I know it's budget season and it's hectic. I'm Lisa Williams. I'm the vice president of the school board. With me is Molly Abraham. She's a director on the school board. Charlie Eastham, he's a director on the school board and then Superintendent Degner. And then I thought I saw Deb and then Deb Scott, who is Assistant Director of our special and preschool division. And we are really excited to be able to talk to you about preschool tonight.
Great. Okay, everyone met. So who, who would like to start with the discussion of what your idea is with using local option sales tax?
So I think we've got a quick slide deck that I turn it over to Superintendent Degner and Deb to run through and kind of walk you through the presentation. And then we've got time for questions. I was gonna, these guys stole my joke, my thunder. I was gonna say no questions about the weather tomorrow and whether or not.
I just headed it off, Lisa. I know everybody has questions about it. So, yeah.
But if that's okay with you all, that's how we'd like to proceed.
Very good. Okay, Superintendent Degner.
All right. Well, thanks again, guys. I appreciate you having us here this evening and making some, some time for this conversation. I will just apologize in the background. I have one that thinks she's going to be a future Hawkeye and who knows, maybe she will be. But if you hear the basketball bouncing in the background, that's what we have going on upstairs. So it's a little loud, at least in my ears. But what we really wanted to spend some time talking to you about this evening is just opportunity to expand preschool and look for a partnership between the district and our municipalities to do so. We did spend time at the joint entities meeting, talking a lot about lost. And Director Williams earlier when we're meeting with the city of Iowa City tonight talked about, you know, we don't like to bring a problem without a potential solution. And the lost is one solution for a funding mechanism to create an opportunity to support this. But we're certainly not tied to that and open to any and all, you know, options for that. What we're really looking for is some help to be able to scale this up the way we would like. If you're not familiar with Iowa school funding around preschool, what districts can receive is really halftime waiting, which means we get half the per pupil funding for a student, which again equates to then we provide them a half day experience. That's not real workable for most families to drop off their student in the middle of the day, whether it's for the afternoon session or for a morning session. And so for that to be more accessible to the folks that we're not reaching, what we'd really like to do is have a full day option and still do half a priest, you know, half a day of preschool and then provide wrap care for families that cannot afford that typically in a no cost fashion for them. Other families would still pay, but for our FRL families, this would be a model that would allow us to provide a free full day experience for the students. And so I'm going to start with a piece of data and just display that on the screen here in a minute. And then Deb's gonna work through kind of just our slide deck and some of the logistical and the numbers and the math behind this. And then we'll really just open it up to questions or conversation that you guys have from there about the idea or about the potential partnership. So the first thing I wanted to share this evening is really, this is just a data piece or a proof point about why preschool matters. You can tell our students that have had a preschool experience and their, their achievement levels here according to our fast bridge math data. And if you look at this, you see those achievement levels in the seventies and then up to eighty percent in grade six and those without a preschool offering, you see hover around in the, in the fifty percent there. And so we know this matters. We know the gap doesn't close too typically. If anything, it widens as we progress through the system even into seven, twelve. And then if you're familiar with research around preschool data, you know that it informs anything from economic success in the community to our school to prison pipeline. When you look at, at those statistics as well and what happens to our adults later in life. And so it really does start early. And we believe in our preschool offering and what we can expand and the success of that. And really the attempt to reach all kids, because that's what we're about in public education is making sure that everybody has that experience and that, that we should be able to provide that, that option to families. And so I think that, that chart just kind of does a nice, quick share of, you know, just the substantial impact of being able to have access to preschool and the difference that it makes. So with that, then I'm going to share my screen because I think Deb was having some problems with that. So I'm going to share again. And this time it'll be the slide deck that we'll work through. And like I said, Deb will talk about kind of numbers of current kids we serve in preschool, kids that have no preschool experience, how we'd like to scale up that. And then really what the ask is or the reason we're meeting with you guys here this evening. So Deb, with that, I'll let you kind of jump in here and you just tell me when you want me to click different times.
Thank you. We can go, yeah, we can go to the next slide, get started. All right. As Mr. Degner shared, we're going to go over our current state, our desired state, and then the numbers that we wanted you to consider tonight, or at least have in front of you tonight. So if we want to go to the next slide. This is our current state. And as we have shared, there are eighteen preschools right now in twenty-one of our elementary buildings. We have twenty-nine total sessions, eighteen of those are in the morning and eleven are in the afternoon. If you look at bullet four, you will see that we do have pilot sites for what is called our wrap care. And our wrap care sites are Schimmick Hills and Wickham at this time. And that is where students are, parents are able to on a tuition basis or through childcare assistance have their child stay for the full day. So we have, they have half a day of preschool, whether it's in the morning or the afternoon. And then the rest of that is wrap care and daycare for a full day experience. The second bullet really shows you what it means to be at half day and gives you some detail with the times. Transportation currently is provided to and from school by family, by families, unless that is specified in an IEP that they will receive, that the child will receive transportation. The fifth bullet is an important piece of information that we, we gather every year and ask our families, did your child have a preschool experience anywhere? And in the last school year, we found that by self-report, two hundred and eighty students did not have access to preschool anywhere as they entered one of our kindergartners, kindergarten classes. So we can go the next slide.
Yeah. And one thing I might add, because I didn't take it from the top, but Deb did a nice job of pointing that out there about those pilot sites. A question that maybe I'll just head off here. You might say, well, why don't you guys just do more of the pilot sites if you're doing those? And really the math for us becomes difficult on that. The budget doesn't work and it's, it's something that we're worried about being able to sustain. The model right now is basically the pay families subsidize the families that can't pay or they use that childcare assistance funding for the wrap care. And it's just really not a sustainable model for us. And as we enter, what is even going to be a more choice heavy scenario for families and, and some uncertainty around Ed savings accounts and what that's going to mean to the district. It's really not something financially viable for us to continue and to bank on in that fashion. So thanks for touching on that one, Deb, because I kind of left that off the beginning about why we're concerned about just the viability of those pilot sites if we don't have some additional assistance.
And the next slide is a bit more about who we currently serve. There are four hundred and seventy-five preschool eligible students that we are serving in our preschools. We also partner and serve one hundred and fourteen preschool eligible students in our affiliated partnerships. The two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three kindergarten enrollment was one thousand thirty-five. This is our desired state. We would like to provide quality preschool offerings throughout the district to serve the maximum number of children and provide ease of access to families. We would also like high quality childcare options to increase that access again to preschool offerings and continue to pursue funding option, opportunities to provide childcare access for all Iowa City families who qualify for free and reduced lunch. And as always, we will manage operational costs regarding preschool services. These are some assumptions that our team made as we looked to achieve our desired state. The cost is based on an assumption of one preschool classroom in each elementary building. So that is twenty-one, all of, all twenty-one schools. Each elementary class will have an AM and a PM session. That's forty-two sessions entire, in, in total. Each classroom will have wrap care that is available via tuition for all and free for our free and reduced lunch families. Transportation provided to eligible students as well. So this is going to give you a picture of some of the numbers that we're talking about. The first, sorry, did somebody have, I'm sorry, Matt, I thought I heard you saying something. The first column is just the funding sources. Now let, give you a moment to read that. As you move to the next column, there was some work done by the team to establish a conservative enrollment. A conservative enrollment would be twenty-six students per site. That was really based on some historical averages before COVID of what we saw in our preschools. And that was determined that twenty-six per site would be a conservative enrollment. Of course, the maximum enrollment that we could accept into an AM session and a PM session would be forty total students, twenty and twenty. You can see here the total cost difference, whether we go with conservative enrollment or the maximum enrollment. The next line is the district contribution. Then there's special education costs. And I would point out that we have asterisks by that because that can vary from year to year, depending on how many students are eligible for special education services. Then we touched on funding from the state. That's based on a per pupil cost that is determined by the state. And then we are looking for our municipalities to contribute that bottom line number. Moving on, when you get asked or when you have to contemplate what really goes into a quality preschool, what type of staffing would we need? We feel if we expand our preschools in the manner that we are suggesting, we would need two lead support teachers. There's one at this time covering our preschools. Early childhood associate costs would be based on IEP needs, preschool secretary, preschool IDS, that is an instructional design specialist. Those are those people that have been in our schools for some times that support teachers on the use of curriculum, good instruction. And preschool IDS would be focused on the best instructional strategies for early childhood. Instructional materials, supplemental instructional materials. There again, you see transportation costs would be a piece of the total. And again, I will let you kind of look at those total costs and look at this chart for just a moment. And then we can go to the next slide. And this continues, if we were to expand, we would need twenty-one early childhood teachers, twenty-one associates, because that is the state ratio mandate. We would feel that we would need a preschool administrator designated to this work. Again, you have snack costs, instructional material costs. Here is the line that we would like you to really look at tonight because the supplemental assistance to help all of our families be eligible or receive that wrap care, that is what that number is about. Again, we have listed the transportation and our district contribution. And keeping in mind that that middle column is the conservative enrollment. The last column is full enrollment and you can see the numbers up there again for your information. As we go to the next slide, then we begin to break down information that we know now by municipality. And also worked hard, the team worked hard on trying to establish for the municipalities, some idea of what this means to them financially. Enrollment rate, in this case, we looked solely at this last school year. And for your purposes tonight, University Heights column is there next to the last column. There weren't any students that were in the University Heights catchment this year. That doesn't mean there haven't been in the past. And again, we have a big asterisk there because this varies from year to year. So you can see the average percent enrollment over six years for University Heights. You can also see our team's attempt to kind of talk about a locked rate of revenue that we would need from each municipality. We also present to you a cost by student rate and what that looks like over time. And I realize this is a lot to take in. So I don't know, I missed, when we've done this before, we just keep going and we can keep going and come back to these slides at any time. So I think we will go to the next slide. The key takeaways really for our reason to present tonight and at other times is that we all believe that students deserve the benefit of a high quality preschool services. Students deserve to have their basic needs met, things, and including things such as food, safe learning space, trusted adult. Students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch would have access to all of those services to include lunch, wrap care, transportation at no cost to the family. Families who do not have free and reduced lunch will still have access to preschool with wrap care for a cost. And I think we are now on the question slide.
And one point I'd just like to draw in before you guys open up to questions is what Deb was talking about on this line with the supplemental assistance for wrap care. If you notice, that almost mirrors the ask that we're making of the municipals. And so really, we feel like that's what the request is for, is that, you know, for us to be able to stand up the, the wrap care to make this a full day option for our families that are on FRL status, so they can have that experience free. You notice that number based on full enrollment there matches that sixteen sixty number that's presented at first to get us up and going. It's not quite fully realized here, but it does get there on the full enrollment. So that's really kind of the, I guess, the talking point, if you will, about why we're making the request and the help we would need to be able to do that. So like Deb said, with that, we're happy to answer any questions or go back and review any information that would be helpful.
Maybe you could go back to the, there's a few, maybe a couple of slides previous or maybe it was after, I don't know. But what was basically, I see what you wanted funding for preschool, the big, big picture ask is from University Heights is what? And do you even have the specific or was it just a couple of different options?
Yeah. And I think that's a great question, Bobby. And the part of even when we just talked Iowa City about this a couple of hours ago, I think what we would need to do as a next step is continue some conversation with the municipalities to know which of these funding models is the one we would want to try to go with. Because here, if it's based off current enrollment, we know that's probably going to change because this is just the current year, twenty-two, twenty-three. If it's a percentage, then you can see how that share breaks down or if we would do a per pupil kind of cost and what that would look like. Deb talked about trying to lock in a rate for a period of time. So you could plan and make your budget viable for a number of years. Maybe there's an incremental increase that would be agreed on to on a yearly basis. The ask from University Heights is fairly low just from the number of students in the, in the catchment area. As you can tell compared to maybe our big three, North Liberty, Corvill and Iowa City and what we're asking of them. And so the commitment would rather, I, I think for you guys, the thing to think about is, you know, being a part of that collective commitment to be a piece of this, knowing, you know, and then you're having to answer the question around the funding source, I guess, is where would you find those funds? And at the joint entities meeting, we talked about a potential funding source for that. Maybe that makes sense for University Heights and maybe it doesn't. That's, that's your guys' purview on that piece. But I hope that kind of addressed your question.
Yep, that's great.
How would the schools have room for the fourth, four-year-olds?
Yeah, great question. So in the fall of twenty-four, we're actually moving all sixth graders to our junior highs. We're in the process of additions at our junior highs to create middle schools. And so we really believe that by the sixth graders not being on those campuses, that space will be freed up to, to handle preschool sections and classrooms and students. So that's really the, the opportunity for us to do this. So it's, it's been a shared board goal for a number of years. And as we've talked about middle school, we definitely talked about preschool and being able to expand preschool during that time with an opportunity to do that on the sites because of that move.
Oh, I know sometimes we can get like too much in the weeds talking about like IDS and all of these school acronyms, which even after three years on the board are really still new to me. The big picture here is what I'm really excited about is that we're talking about a universal preschool experience for every single person that lives in, in the Iowa City Community School District. And to do that is going to require the help from the municipalities. And you guys can see on that slide deck that University Heights and the county kind of have the smallest parts to play here, but we still think that it's a really important part. Just because we don't have any students from University Heights this year, doesn't mean that we don't have kids from your municipality that attend our preschool program. In fact, I think some of our city council, your city council members have sent their kids through ICCSD preschool at joint entity. But we also know that while asking you all for maybe nine thousand dollars a year seems like a small amount for Iowa City, nine thousand dollars a year could be a huge amount for your budget because you guys are obviously very different in size and scope than some of our other municipality partners. And that's where we wanted to come with the idea of using lost as a vehicle to provide the funding to support the preschool program. And that's the local option sales tax. It's not a part of the presentation that you just saw because maybe you would tell us, hey, Lisa, Matt, ICCSD, loss sounds really hard to pass. If all you need is eight thousand dollars, we can find that in our budget without jumping through all these hoops. But we don't want to kind of come hat in hand without a solution of how to fund it. And that's where the lost comes in.
Normally as staff, I stay very much in the background, but as a former, former teacher in Iowa City with thirty-three years experience and both of my kids attending preschools in the district from age eight weeks on, I, I want to throw in my personal endorsement of doing this. I think that offering four-year-old preschool universally is a great idea. And as FRL, as I fall right into the acronym game, free and reduce lunch, free and reduced lunch numbers within the district have, have steadily increased over the last thirty years. And as you can see from that initial slide, having those experiences early in the game makes a huge difference. So I will tell the school district folks, back when we passed lost back for the flood in two thousand nine, University Heights, I believe voted yes at a rate of about eighty percent. And that's because we get to collect the tax, but there's nowhere in town that actually has to charge it because we don't have any place that, well, we do now with, with Sidekick selling books, but otherwise most of our businesses are restaurants now. So I think, I think if the, it's still the case that it's a countywide vote, but it's collected by area, we would, we could help to push a countywide number higher. But if it doesn't fail, but if it doesn't pass someplace else, we're, we're not going to help with that. But, but that's the way our voters have been in the past. So.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate the, you know, personal experience you've got with the district and with your own kids in there and, and some of the history on the, on the lost piece too. And I know kind of when other councils have asked us next steps, I think that, you know, the big next step is to know really from each of you as your own entities, if you support the idea. And then depending on what funding mechanism you would consider, that obviously creates some different time constraints around what your next step would be. But you know, from, from the counselor's perspective, if you have a conversation around this and decide this is something that you are supportive of and you'd want to be a part of with the other municipalities. I think the date we'd kind of told Iowa City there was April first is when we look for that and then try to do some more logistical planning, right? There's still a lot of details that would have to be figured out. This slide that I'm currently displaying would take some work to know, you know, what is the model we'd use between all the different municipalities to, to have a share in this. And then how is each of you going to determine the funding source? And those could look different, right? For different groups. I don't think that has to be the same or necessarily that we're pushing that that's the same. But if you have in mind, you know, the question of what would be the next step, I, I think that's the way we would kind of point you in. Lisa, I don't know if you have anything you'd expand on that. I think that kind of covers how we answered it earlier today.
Yeah. Um, no, I think that was a really good, good summary. I mean, the next step is that we're asking is for the various municipalities to have an up or down vote to say, yes, this is something that we want to support and move forward with. If you did say that, if, if, if you're a no, then, then we will thank you for the time tonight. But if you were a yes, then the next step would be to kind of get the city managers folks together and really talk about that slide that's up on the screen. This slide really confused me like the first eight times I saw it, but each of those rows are three different budget options. And they all result in the one point six million dollars to fund the program. It's just different ways of getting to it. And why the school district doesn't really care which of those funding options are ultimately decided on. They do have to be consistent. So we couldn't have Iowa City picking, you know, row one and North Liberty picking row two and the county and University Heights picking row three, if that makes sense. And so there would have to be some work to get the city, the city folks in a room together and say, okay, which one of these funding models is the one that we would want to go back to our counselors and recommend as the overall wisest one to adopt going forward. And so they would come back and put that in front of you, and there'd be more firm decisions in the future, uh, but what we're just really interested in is, is. Is this a conversation that you're, you're willing to continue to have a concept that you're willing to support? And, and do you want to, um, continue the work with us on it? And that doesn't have to be tonight, like Matt said, we're looking for about an April first deadline for that.
What if some city doesn't want to contribute?
So that's a great question. We've gotten that one too, um, and I think really for that. Then it, um, then the formula changes, right? Then the math changes. This is all kind of based on. Everybody working together, um, and. You know, if we weren't going to provide, you know, um. If we weren't going to receive funding from University Heights or from Iowa City, uh, then we would kind of have to reevaluate. Um, the numbers on this and bring back proposals for those that did want to support it to see what we could do. It does become more complex, uh, because as you guys know, our. Uh, attendance areas for our elementary schools do not line up cleanly with our municipal, um, city limits, uh, by any means, and so. Um, that would be more complicated, but I also don't think it would, um, impede our progress. We'd still like to. Move forward as much as we can about extend, expanding, uh, full day preschool offerings for kids that need it, and so. Uh, it wouldn't stop us, um, but it, it would change the equation, um, that is, uh, in front of you here tonight about what that would look like and what we would do.
But I don't want you to hear from that, that's, for example, if Iowa City decided not to participate. That we'd be seeking to redistribute their one million dollar contribution between all of the remaining five municipalities and that.
Yeah, no, that wouldn't be doable, no.
That's not doable, and that's not what would happen.
Yeah, the one point six number would change, right? We wouldn't be asking for a collective one point six, we'd be scaling down. What we would have to provide, because right now it's based off of a, an, uh, preschool site everywhere, so. The whole formula would change from that aspect a little bit, Lisa's right, yeah, we wouldn't be coming with the same overall request.
Yeah, and, and the other thing that's important to understand about the request from the municipalities is. We're using it to primarily provide free wraparound daycare for our, um, free and reduced school lunch kits. As well as transportation for a free and reduced school lunch kit. So again, if a municipality chooses not to participate, like such as North Liberty. Then when Matt says we're going to redesign and real, rescale the program, what that means is maybe families in North Liberty who don't qualify for free and reduce school lunch. They don't have a free preschool option. But that doesn't mean that families in Corville or University Heights who qualify. Would also be denied that option. That just means that we're going to concentrate and focus where we provide those wraparound sites. Um. With the, um. Uh, subsidized tuition.
Other questions we can answer for you?
Does anybody have any other questions? I mean, what if you decide to use local option sales tax? And you put it on the ballot in November? And it doesn't pass?
Sure, well, in my.
That's happened, and that's happened in Johnson County where a city did not pass it. And they didn't participate in it.
Right, and then I think, you know, we, we, there would be a couple of things to look at, Mayor Fromm, I think you would. Um. Then you would, you guys would have to ask yourself internally, you know, is there a different funding source we'd want to try to support this with? And if not, then I think we'd really be talking about what, you know, kind of that conversation that we just buttoned up there, the question we just provided, then if. You know, if that was going to prevent the municipality from participating, then. Then we would run that out, just like we had talked about, or you could say, okay, well, we tried this, this didn't work, but here's our. Our next step or our plan B that we would use to support this.
I see, okay.
So, but what about, this is Steve Ballard, I'm the city attorney, so I don't, I don't have much to say about any of this, but I do have a question. Because the last time there was a, the local option and sales tax, uh, ballot issue, if I remember correctly, uh, the city of University Heights approved it. And I think the city of Iowa City approved it, but I'm pretty sure the city of Corville did not.
He did not.
Do I have that right, Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, and so, so then it was enacted and collected in Iowa City and in University Heights, but not in Corville. And, you know, in, in that instance. You know, I, I think that the, that the local option sales tax, uh, provided a revenue source for, uh, for, uh, municipalities. In this instance, if the revenue source was earmarked or geared toward, uh, the ICCSD proposal. And it passed in some places and didn't pass in others. Because I'm having trouble figuring out if it gets implemented in those places where it passes and the places that didn't pass. Did they already make a commitment? Are they going to have to make up funding somewhere else, or how's all that, how's all that work?
Yeah, Lisa, you wanted maybe just try to say it a little different way.
Yeah, so Steve, you, you hit on the two options, right? So say. The municipality, the lost fails, but they still want to support the program. They have the choice to find another revenue stream. In, within their existing budget to, to provide their contribution, and then we can stand it up, because again. ICCSD isn't wed to where the money comes from. We just know that we need the money to provide the program. And then if they decide we don't have, you know, it's Corville, we don't have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our budget to provide for this, so we can't participate. Then what we as a district do, because that money is really targeted towards wraparound care and transportation for our low-income families. We just won't be able to provide that benefit to low-income families residing in the non-participating jurisdictions. So we won't, so a, a student that may attend Corville Central. Wouldn't have access to this all-day preschool experience for free. Now, we'll still have the half-day preschool. And we'll probably still have a full wrap. Offered a full day of daycare, but that's going to be solely tuition-based and only accessible to families who can pay. For that full day of tuition. The, the contribution from the municipalities is really subsidizing that full day experience for families that cannot afford it.
Well, you have open enrollment, so, um, I can't go to Corville Central, so I'll open enroll to some other school that. I can attend. I don't know, I'm just trying to figure this out a little bit.
This gets into some more district terminology, so, um, transfers, um, I think transfers logistically would have to talk about what that looks like. We have a current elementary transfer policy, and that's really what you, I think you're asking Mayor Fromm, from inside the district. Uh, what that looks like if a, you know, family was zoned to Corville Central, but they wanted to attend. Hoover on the east side of town, just using extreme example, right, then we would use our. Transfer guidelines, Stephen, first to find if that's allowable, then I think we'd have to work through the logistical conversation about making the funding work, I think the. The beauty for the municipalities at that is if they all support it and they all give a funding stream, that's just a problem for us to. You know, that's just then back to us on the logistic end with the transfer and. Dealing with that family, the money is already in place, the opportunities are there, we provide it to kids, we just need to work through our transfer options. The second ter, or the term you used around open enrollment, for us, that means kids coming from outside of the Iowa City Community School District. And for preschool students, that's not allowable, um, so we wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't have the concern about a student coming from. Um, Williamsburg to access our free preschool, uh, based on the money that, that you guys, um, put forward.
I'm not up on the latest terminology, I just.
No, that's all right, we still mix them up in here too, so you're all right, that's just a distinction we try to.
Thank you, thank you. Uh. Uh, does council have any more questions? Does staff have any questions? Um. I think it's going to take some time to digest some of this, and, uh, with an April first deadline. That you'd like to get a response, um. We do have quite a few meetings in March because of budget, and so. Um. We might need to, who, who would I connect to to talk to somebody if we need more information?
You can just reach out to me, Mayor Fromm, and get the, either the answers to you, or we'd be happy to come again if we needed to, to talk about it some more, or provide some additional detail for sure.
I think we might have to do that. Now, I have a member of the public here. Alejandro, would you like to speak at all? Do you have a question? Or you just are interested in listening? I mean, I know you're on mute, but, uh. I just wanted to give you an opportunity if you wanted to ask a question.
Thank you very much, eh, can you hear me?
Yes.
And, eh, 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 thank you for giving me a chance, eh, I'm, I'm here just as a fly on the wall, I guess, just trying to get informed on, eh, eh. On what's going on with the city, so, eh, eh, thank you for letting me attend, I don't have any questions, I think my questions were asked, eh, answered already.
Well, thank you for coming. Uh, the another, uh, if we don't have any questions, can we move to the second? Agenda item, which is update on Horn School. Addition.
You bet we can, let's see here, I need to get back to this.
I mean, this is good timing for that, we're just starting to get plans. And, uh.
Yeah, so, um, I'll just take this one away, Mayor Fromm, and, um, on Friday, well, actually tomorrow, Kim will probably upload our board packet in, in appendix nine. Um, this week you should see, um, the, um, a plan we're putting forward around Horn, or as far as the financials in the appendix nine. But you won't see it yet until probably Friday or Monday, because we're doing the bid opening, uh, for Horn on Friday, which is. Uh, exciting, uh, always to do that, and so we're looking forward to doing that, but it'll be added to the appendix nine documents a little later, so if you are, we're looking for it in our board packet. Uh, you'll find it a couple of days late, because that bid opening is actually happening on Friday, um. But what I wanted to show you was just a piece of the report that we delivered to the. Board around our second, uh, facility master plan and FMP two point O update, and it just has a, um. Slide in here, uh, that does speak to Horn, uh, specifically, and it talks about. Uh, Horn being out to bid and what's going to be included in that project, and so we're excited for this, we know Horn is really. Uh, pressed on size right now, its enrollment has grown, and as we've done attendance area development. Uh, there's been a number of students zoned to that school, and so, um, what is out to bid and what will be opening on Friday is a four, um, kindergarten classroom addition. Uh, new cafeteria and kitchen. Uh, two preschool classrooms, so very relevant to the conversation we're having tonight. Uh, converting the existing multipurpose room into a new media center, uh, if you've been to Horn, you know that that's right in the. Kind of the middle of the school, so that's a little different layout, one that we don't necessarily prefer. Uh, anymore, uh, renovated music and band rooms, uh, something exciting the district's been able to do is put elementary. Uh, music and band are specifically band orchestra. Um, at our elementary buildings rather than having to travel to a, a different site, and that's really increased participation and. And also our diverse participation in those programs, and so, but they need bigger spaces, um, they're using kind of some existing spaces right now, and those are really cramped. And then new special education classrooms in the existing media center, so, uh, while moving that media center, then we'll turn those into classrooms. In that spot, um, and so some exciting renovations there for Horn and. Uh, some that are long overdue, but we're happy to get that project out to bid, and, uh, we're hopeful with what we've been seeing with bids lately. Um, that, that'll come in, uh, in a good shape for us, and we'll be able to take on all these projects, so. Um, that's really the information I wanted to share with you about where we're at in that process as far as timeline goes, and then also, uh, what some of the things you can expect are.
Uh, the timeline, so this starts. When the school is out? No, it starts before that, right? Because it's a building, another building, right?
Yeah, so I mean, we'll, we'll do what we can even when students are in the building, so once we accept the bid and. Um, agree that, you know, we're going to move forward with a, a specific contractor, then we will start working where we can, of course. Um, you know, we always have the philosophy of not trying to, of course, interrupt. Uh, the school day, sometimes our, that means our staff and students have to be super flexible, which they've been, and we moved to different parts of the building, but. Uh, we haven't missed a day of school due to construction through these two plans, and we don't intend to, and so. Uh, we just begin where we can, but yeah, that'll start yet in twenty-three.
And when are you planning on finishing it? Or you don't know that exactly, but.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to quote that to you exactly.
I know, that's dangerous now.
Yeah, about where we'd at, I, I'm sure Dwayne, if he was here, he would give you a timeline of when he hopes to have it done. Uh, but depending on the contractor, sometimes that, without knowing the contractor that has been awarded the bid yet. Uh, they'll, they'll give us a better timeline once they've accepted the project and, and we've accepted their bid and can project that out.
Okay, are there any questions about the, uh, addition? To Horn?
Uh, this is Doug Swail, city council member, eh, Matt, is this a bid? Bidding, uh, is it open to out-of-state bidders as well, or just for Iowa only? Bidders for contracting?
I believe, um, we do consider out-of-state bidders, generally, they don't take our projects just because of the expense of travel and being able to find local subs. Um, but I do believe it's open to out-of-state bidders. We've had some bids come in that way.
Okay, well, I, I'd like to see it stay in Iowa, especially for asking for local sales tax help. I'd like to see the contractors come from Iowa myself.
Yep, and we do too, and, and the, the good news is usually those out-of-state ones, they're way above, um, the, the price on that for. Um, competitive bid process in Iowa, I mean, the, the school districts are pretty compelled to take the lowest bid, uh, usually unless there's something that's missing from that bid, and so. Uh, out-of-state contractors really have a hard time competing with that anyways, but. We'd agree with you as well for all of those reasons, and, and it supports jobs in our own community, and, uh, it's just a better, it's just a better way to approach it.
Well, exactly, the money stays in our communities.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I want to thank, uh, everyone. School board members and, uh, Matt and Deb. Thank you so much, uh. I'm starting to think of some more questions, but, uh. I think it'll be good to start discussion with the council and see where, where we are. And where we need to go, and we'll have some time to think about it a little bit too. Especially because we're looking at the budget right now. Um. But anyway, um. I'm, um, well, we have some city business to take care of, some payment of bills. And so. You, you're free to stay, it's all, but anyway.
We'll go watch that basketball, Mayor Fromm, yeah, I will, um, the last thing I was going to say is I'll send that, uh, presentation to Mike, I know we just displayed it here tonight, but. Mike, if that's okay, if I send it over to you, then you guys will have that too, um, so that as you guys do some follow-up, you can.
Yeah, that's great, and I have a, I have the bid sheets and the, a set of the plans that we're here in the city office that just got dropped off too. And the counselors all got the early site plans.
Awesome.
Not great. It's a nice, small town, it's easy to walk it to their doors.
There you go. All right, thank you, guys, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so, next we have payment of the bills, and Lori sent five warrants. Uh, the Visa, you, you, I think you all got the email, and then specifically the Visa is nine seventeen thirty-four, Johnson County refuse. Sixty-eight oh eight, uh, Cron, Cronlogi and Olson's eight sixty-eight forty, US Cellular is eighty-four thirty-seven, and AT&amp;T Mobility is two eighty-eight eighty-nine. Is there any objection to pay in these bills? Hearing none, the bills will be paid by unanimous consent. Um. Okay, so our next council meeting is March seven. The public hearing, I'm thinking that we start talking about this, um. March fourteen at our regular council meeting, I'll put it on the agenda, and that way, uh. Uh, you can think about it some, and, um. Bobby and I and Steve Cool will look at the budget too, and, um. And, and check, you know. Get more information, we'll have more details then. Too, we've got to, we've got to, uh, work out raises and things, and. Um, there are some increases. On some. Um. Uh, contracts, so we need to look at all of that. Does, um. Does anybody want to say anything? Add anything?
The only thing I was going to jump in to add.
Yes.
Is that, uh, I got an email from Tara Higgins at Johnson County today. House, uh, Senate Bill one eighty-one was signed today, which was the one about the residential rollback, which means. Tara will start recalculating all the assessments and valuations, which is going to affect our budget. Um. Because that was signed in today, I, I believe we are going to have to move to that April date. For budget submission. for budget submission. Because this is the, this is what's fixing the rollback. So we could be meeting a lot in March and in April. So.
Hopefully they won't be long meetings. Are there any other announcements? Is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate your time. Thank you so much. Go Hawks.